Hello. So, greetings. It's the March 28th, 2019 meeting of the Sherburne Board of Selectmen. Our fearless leader Chuck Yan is not here. We're going to ask Dave Williams to please read our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll amend or approve the agenda and have a period of public comment in consideration of a consent agenda that includes payroll warrant and sets the next meeting dates of April 11th, April 23rd, May 9th, and May 23rd. Then, there's a note that May 14th is the town election. Consideration of an open meeting law complaint is the next item, and then consideration of a revocable license agreement with Sherburne Yacht Club, and then 2019 annual town meeting preparation, April 23rd, 2019. Consideration of ballot questions for annual town election and ballot questions need to be submitted to the town clerk in final written form by April 9th. Under routine business is finance director report, town administrator report, and selectman reports. And then adjourn to executive session not to return to open session. Executive session, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares. Library, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief, police chief. And MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. Police union. There are two under the finance director report? Is there a reserve fund transfer that needs to be added?
Yeah, Sean has something else to speak about.
Okay. Could we amend the agenda to add under the finance director report a reserve fund transfer request?
I'd so move, but what's the question? We just got handed a different, or a different agenda?
Yeah, this is a different agenda. That's one more. It's just a different agenda?
No, I just had to type it one at a time.
Fancy your paper? What is this?
It's the dates.
I have the date for you.
Oh, okay. That's correct. Okay.
Same agenda.
We're not going to meet in 2010, is that what you're saying?
No.
So Paul's move that we add the reserve fund transfer, do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, and that's something that we didn't know about until today, so I think that's fair to add it. All in favor of adding that? Okay, it's added. And we'll put that, when we put that up?
Under the finance director report?
Mr. Chair, you can also put that under the town, sorry, town meeting preparation.
Because we're going to have to talk about it when we talk about the ballot.
Because it does relate to, specifically mention the ballot, and it's somewhat relates to the ballot question.
Great, good. We'll do that. Okay, so we have some public comment by our collector, Nancy Hess. On our favorite topic.
The tax bills.
Oh, yeah. It didn't go around. It's that time of year again, and I just want people to know that we have mailed the bills for the second half, this goes 2019, they're due May 1st. And in the bill is always our little stuffer, they're due May 1st, we are open for extended hours on May 1st until 6:00. And Mass General Law requires that we charge interest if you come in the next day with them. It's not a Sherburne rule, it's part of the law. Postmarks are not accepted as proof of payment. You can pay online right up until midnight, but I wouldn't wait until then in case it doesn't work. And you can get there by going to the Sherburne, town or Sherburne website, sherburnema.org, and there's a payment center there. You can follow the instructions to pay your bill. If you can't find your bill, you can go online to www.taxbillsonline and you can get a copy off of the Internet. Both the assessors and the collector have websites that has, each has a lot of information and frequently asked questions, so you're welcome to access that. At the bottom of the stuffer is a form that you can fill out and make a contribution to the tax aid program here where we have the ability to assist some of the elderly or disabled that have more trouble paying their tax bill. And also, there's a reminder here that you can buy your farm pond stickers online. But if you do it online, or you do it by mail, or you do it over the counter, you have to pay at the collector's office unless you are a senior and are entitled to a free sticker. On the back is an application for the sticker if you want to mail it in, or if you walk in to pay and buy it, but you don't need to fill out the application if you are going to do it online. And again, this has to be paid at the collector's office during collector's office hours. So we've had a good response already from people on paying their tax bills, and we always appreciate that. So if you haven't gotten a bill and you know you should, then you should contact the collector's office to see where it may be. That's basically it. Please don't throw away the stuffer, it's a good reference thing until you've paid your bill. Thanks.
Thank you for the information.
Thanks, Nancy. Okay. Let's jump over the next thing for the time being and go to the revocable license agreement since we've got Brian here for that.
Should we just do the consent agenda?
Oh, let's do the consent agenda first, okay.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
Which one, on the corrected one or the?
The correct, the corrected one, obviously, because.
All in favor, all in favor of the consent agenda? All right, good, we gave consent. And Brian, you've got the floor, I guess, or the table. And this is about the license agreement that we talked about at the meeting two weeks ago, and we also talked about it back in January, I think.
That's correct.
And there was a draft, which I don't happen to have a copy.
Is that different from what you gave?
What's not different?
This is what you gave me to send.
This is what I gave you to send everybody. Okay, great, yes. So I worked on that a little bit, I took comments from the board.
Thank you.
And a few other changes, and now, Brian, you said you may have some comments on this, right?
The only comments were that we added Exhibit A, which has the current location of the dock system and the proposed location for the.
Except it's not here, but that's.
We don't have it.
You did send it to me.
Yeah, and Diane has it, so it will get distributed. We're obviously not going to ink this tonight. The insurance requirement is about two to three times what we're doing right now, and I was hoping that that's something that we could work on, maybe bringing those down to $1 million, $2 million for coverage as opposed to the 2.5, which is in the proposed agreement.
Paul, you had a number at the last meeting that you thought was a safe number?
One and five, one and two.
One and two, okay.
The Chapter 258 of the General Laws that waives sovereign immunity for the town says there's only $1 million of exposure. And if we have insurance for the $1 million, we're covered. We don't, we don't have exposed, we haven't waived sovereign immunity for over that number.
Okay. So is everybody okay with that? Yeah. So you're okay with that?
David, that's. All our other contracts are $1 million.
Perfect, okay, good. So we got that done.
Okay, and everything else is really, looks fine by us, and we've had an attorney take a look at as well. We have some nonsubstantial edits, but we can kind of kick those back and forth. In general, I'd like to try to just make sure we keep the process moving forward. We've met with the Conservation Commission, we're scheduled for a hearing there on the 11th, and if everything goes well with them, I'm sure there'll be conditions, but those are things that we should be living with anyways.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions?
This is as of April 1, so even if this hasn't been finally signed up, you know, I think by the board, if we vote it tonight, that's, you know, at least good enough informal authorization once you get whatever approvals you need from Conservation.
Yes, I think, as long as we have them by the end of April, I think we'll be all set to move. There'll be some preseason moves we have to make before we move the docks in, but that should be enough time.
All right, and we should be able to get this signed up, you know, depending on how substantive your comments are, probably in the next week or something, we can get that.
Yes, we can get those right back to you.
Okay, good, thank you.
So my two cents are first to thank Mike Giamo for the effort he put into this. Thank God we have a lawyer willing to spend the time and effort to do this. Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Brian, for working with us on this. I've read it, I think it's in pretty good shape. So I'd like to move to approve it and to authorize the vice chair to sign the document for the board and to authorize the vice chair to make any nonsubstantive changes as may be presented in order to finalize the documents, so that we don't have to come back.
That's fine, okay.
I'll second that. Did you want to, do you need to include in your motion about the change to the insurance, or is that?
Oh, yes, changing insurance.
That's the one substantive change, yeah.
That's the one substantive change.
To $1 million, $2 million.
George.
Would it be possible to add as a substantive change that, not necessarily furnishing Exhibit B at this time, since we're talking about changing of the docks, maybe delegating the authority?
Yeah, I didn't think we would have an Exhibit B until we've approved the plans, which is after you get them approved by the town, and you have actually something to approve.
Okay.
And then we would just attach it as Exhibit B, and then it would go forward with that. And if you wanted to change something on it, you'd come back to the board at that time and just swap out Exhibit B, as long as they're okay with it.
That sounds great. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We got a vote. We got a vote.
Okay. All in favor. I think Brian was trusting.
Thank you, Dan.
We might get there.
You never know up here.
Okay, thanks. Diane, I think we had a revised statement, Darren had circulated a statement, there were some changes to.
Yes, I gave it to you.
Okay. Can we get those on the agenda items for the open meeting law?
Yes, okay.
There was a statement, and we have a clerk here who can read the statement into the record.
Paul, I have to read it?
You're the clerk, you have to do something.
That's right.
All right, and so just to set this up, there was an open meeting law complaint right against the board. There were some discussions with the complainant and with our town council and with David, and a resolution was reached, and George will read the statement that is the evidence of the resolution.
All right. On or around February 6th, 2019, an email was sent out from a member of the select board seeking information. The initial email was sent to the finance director, and an email string ensued over the next few days that ultimately included each member of the select board being copied on the emails. The central issue being discussed in the emails was the calculation of non-union employees' salaries, especially as it relates to leap year. There were a number of replies contained in this email string, including follow-up emails from the original sender as well as emails from two other members of the select board. Over the course of the email string, several of the emails expressed opinions from individual board members, which arguably constitutes an inadvertent violation of the open meeting law since all of the members of the select board were copied on each email. A complaint was subsequently filed with the chair of the select board on February 13th, 2019. At our meeting on February 28th, 2019, the select board discussed in detail in open session the subject matter contained in the emails, namely calculating the annual salaries of non-union employees during a leap year. Furthermore, town council, KP Law, offers free training on all types of legal issues each year, and will be providing this year a training on the open meeting law for members of town boards and other town officials and employees, including the select board and school committee. As a result of tonight's discussion and the actions mentioned, as well as the discussion that occurred at the select board meeting on February 28th, 2019, this open meeting law complaint is now resolved.
Thank you.
Town council has asked for a vote of the board, just to confirm that.
Okay, town council has asked for a vote of the board, so do we have a motion, Mr. Durance, this moves?
Second, all in favor? Okay, we've approved that statement. Thank you, thanks for working that out, Darren. Next, we have, I guess it's town meeting time, town meeting preparation. Consideration of ballot questions for the annual town election. We have drafted some.
I got an email from somebody.
From Steve Legge.
Steve Legge, who said that all of the capital purchases they want to have as ballot questions.
Yes.
And that's different from what?
No, it's not.
It's not?
That's exactly what was discussed on Saturday.
That's what he said on Saturday.
They said they were low on free cash this year, and they, they were very clear saying that the plan at that time was to borrow for all the capital assets.
I'm not saying there's a change on there for it. When I read the proposed ballot questions, I didn't see that the proposed ballot questions that were to vote includes.
All of it, I see what you're saying.
All that the advisory committee thinks that they want to have on the ballot.
Well, let's run through them. We have the breathing support equipment.
All right, let's get the ballot questions.
Yep. And the last page in this section. So we have.
It's right at the end of the one.
The very last page of this section.
Yeah, it sticks together, Paul, I had trouble. Perfect.
So the first one is for the breathing support equipment for the Sherburne Fire Department, which is Article 9, Subsection A.
So we have that one.
Yep. Next one, Proposition 2 and 1/2, so the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase an air compressor, material processing equipment, tractor, oh, this puts all the CM and D in one ballot question. All the CM and D items are bunched into one here. But there, but there's a request tonight for a reserve fund transfer for the material processing equipment.
Part of it.
Part of it, okay.
So it's not going to change the word?
Not going to change the ballot question, then.
No.
Okay, got it. And then, the third one is for the facilities, the town buildings, and the fourth one is for the school committee. So the one thing I see. We have them all, the only thing is, I guess the question is, do we want to group all the CM and D items together as one question? Because they are different.
I have a question along those lines. The warrant, the summary says air compressor and two jackhammers. Is that, is that actually comprehensive under just the term air compressor in the question? Because a question does not actually indicate two jackhammers.
Those are the antiques, two jackhammers?
I just think, I would maybe want to strip out the, I don't know, what do you guys think? What, I guess Paul and Mike, I'm more asking you in the past what you've done on these. Do you typically group them all together like this, or?
I have last year's warrant here with me, if you want to refer to it. Typically, we have done each one of these separately. I have last year's warrant, I also, I'm the one that wrote up the capital, so I have the write-up.
Okay, but the warrant had, the warrant has them separately, we're talking about the actual ballot questions.
Yeah, I have written the ballot ones.
Which, I know, I know in the past few years, we've used free cash for a number of things, so they weren't even necessarily ballot questions.
That's correct.
This year's a little different, because everything's on the ballot.
It's also usually just one or two larger line items.
Yeah.
Right.
This is two or three times as many items as there normally would be for smaller ones.
I would personally prefer to have them separated. I think that's kind of, even though we weren't in support of the article, of that, one of the last articles that Michael Lee was talking about, I think this is one of his points, is if we separate them out, it's more transparent as to what people are voting for. So I would prefer, I think, to break them out.
But while we're pondering that, let me just go back over those two jackhammers, because I see, just putting my lawyer's hat on, if we have an appropriation that says air compressor and two jackhammers, and we have a ballot question only for air compressors, but no jackhammers, we're not including the jackhammers in the ballot.
We definitely have to add them.
What's, what's the material processing equipment besides the hot box?
Besides what?
Besides this thing?
Chipper.
A wood chipper?
They got grouped together.
Okay.
In the article.
So the buildings include probably multiple items, and the Pine Hill School probably includes multiple items.
But there were one subsection on the article versus Sean had, or the CM and D had one to, had four different line items on the warrant, which are voted separately, so the ballot questions also.
Do you want me to give you a little bit more detail on it? When, if we decide to, because these are actually already bundled, as you can see, material processing equipment is two things, like Sean said, hot box and chipper.
One of them's coming out, one of them's coming out if we do the transfer.
Correct. But you have two pickup trucks and the highway equipment, which is the tow behind brine sprayer and the leaf blower, so that's actually, you know, four items in that bucket already. So we did bundle things a little bit, so there weren't too many. I've written up the capital for town buildings and for CM and D, which, this is the warrant now, not the ballot question, but it lists and explains everything. And the answer, what I think you said, Paul, there's actually five subprojects under town buildings, which I've written and described each one of what they are. So the vote, the town people at the town meeting will be able to look at the detail. Even though it's not shown in the article, it's shown in our write-up explaining it. And the warrant will include capital budgets reported to back also.
I mean, it's not expected that the actual ballot question will be descriptive as a town meeting description, like the paragraph's long.
Right.
As long as the language is consistent.
Right.
So it mimics the exact language, so people will know that what they're voting on is consistent with the background material of the warrant.
I just think, I like to match it, because you have seven capital items on the warrant, we should have, and if we're borrowing for all of them, we should have seven ballot questions. I feel like that's just more clear.
Yeah, and these are set, right? So it's not like we can split these up.
Well, they're already printed in the warrant, we, as I said, we bought them.
I wouldn't suggest splitting those up, but I think if we have a.
Well, the only thing I see there, George, is that we've got two trucks in the same article, and I'm not sure that that's maybe as well thought through as it should have been, knowing our town's propensity to want to approve fewer vehicles.
I don't care, I don't think it's a material issue for me one way or the other, so I would defer to George with his more recent experience in advisory, mine was quite a few years ago. And if you think that helps the voters.
Yeah, I think it's just more, just from the discussion that I got from what Michael Lee said, I think if people want to be more clear as to what they're voting on, we should have the same items listed on the ballot that we have listed in the warrant, unless, like, obviously, it wouldn't be if we were using free cash for some of them, but since we're borrowing for every one, it should match.
I don't have a problem with it.
What if there is the event, and Mike just indicated, that you say you get a partial approval or even a nonapproval at town meetings, so you break it up, and the tractor doesn't get approved, or one of the trucks doesn't get approved.
Right. So that's why I'd want it to match, because if we have, if one of Sean's items doesn't get approved at town meeting, is then that put his whole ballot question at risk to not get anything. So.
Or he could lose the whole thing on the ballot.
Right, exactly, exactly, so.
That would hurt.
Yes, it would.
Well, my write-up has the full detail on each one of these, like the truck, one of the trucks is, you know, 18 years old and has 120,000 miles, so the write-up explains all of that.
It's not going to say that on the ballot, but it's.
I know that, I know that.
You're going to have to wear sandals, sign outside.
And I'll stand in the rotted bed of the pickup truck, and I'll make sure they see me.
Ask them outside a certain rate.
I'll second.
And move that we, that we change the ballot questions to be seven ballot questions that match the items in the warrant?
That makes sense.
Second.
So when you say they match it, it's going to be these exact words?
It's going to be breathing support equipment will be question one, air compressor and two jackhammers will be question two, material processing equipment will be question three, tractor will be question four, two pickup trucks with highway equipment will be question five, town buildings will be question six, and renovations to Pine Hill School will be question seven.
You might want to put the department, too, that's kind of obvious, but.
Right, right, well.
You know, if you say breathing support equipment, it could be any department.
Yeah, I think each question will be worded, like, if you say, look at question two.
It does, let's do that.
It'll say for the, the air compressor and two jackhammers for the community maintenance and development department.
So the ballot questions have to be to the town clerk 35 days before the election, April 9th. And we don't have a meeting before April 9th.
We need to approve it tonight.
So we have to approve it tonight. We don't have the exact wording, I could take the time to write the wording, but better to have, the town council's here, so the town council could write the wording and give us.
Yeah, I haven't seen these at all yet, but I can certainly have drafts.
We're really just talking about describing what it is they're buying, and the thing is, this is all.
Really just breaking question two.
My problem with it is, I don't think these are clear enough. I mean, I think to say highway equipment is just, it's kind of vague. If we're going to break them up, we ought to.
Well, we shouldn't have done that on the warrant.
Say it more clearly, but if we didn't do it on the warrant, we can't really do it now.
Exactly, yeah, I agree.
But it'll be on the full warrant, it's in our, in our write-up.
The description, yeah.
It's in advisories write-up.
Right, but the wording is going to show on the ballot is just highway equipment, which could be anything.
Yes.
But I think, so we'll think, we should think about that next year when we're writing the warrant.
You guys can think about it next year.
But I think for now, this year, we should just, the question should match the warrant.
I agree with you, it's, I think it's, I don't think we have a choice.
Yeah. So the only question is the hot box, though, because Sean indicates that they'd need that sooner to patch the roads.
I think he's still, but there's still going to be material processing equipment on the ballot, so.
And the number might be just be.
Number is going to be different.
And there's no number on the ballot, is there?
And there's no number on the ballot.
Right.
Do you have to modify it in town meeting floor now, if we do this transfer?
I think so, yeah. When you get to the reserve fund transfer.
No, because the motion doesn't ever list the numbers.
Yeah, go ahead.
For the chair. The motions, there hasn't been a main motion made yet. So the main motion can include numbers that are, whatever the accurate numbers are at the time. Obviously, it'll be up to the moderator determining whether or not that's within the scope of the article. I would point out that the actual article language is approving capital expenditures. That chart is sort of informational, and again, some moderators would say that can be amended in many different ways, but without it even being an amendment, some may take a more literal look. But a lot of what you're talking about can be done in, not only the motions, but the main motions.
Right. In an advisories report, you guys can say that since the time of your hearing, that number's gone down from 96 to 35, assuming we've approved the reserve fund transfer.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I haven't seen these yet. Is the intent of these to be a dead exclusion?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's just using the same form, it's there, just.
Sure.
Copy and change.
It's really just.
Three words in each one.
Article 2 is just being broken out into, I mean, question 2 is being broken out into four sections.
Okay.
Question 2 is becoming four different questions.
Well, you're not looking to change any of the other words. So it's a.
Well, no, I mean, if we started two months ago and had better wording, we would have had different wording, but no. So now we're stuck with this, so let's just put it in there.
So there's a motion made and seconded.
Well, he's going to revise them, why don't we wait and vote on them till October?
Well, when he drafts it, you suggested that he draft the language.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we can talk about this reserve fund transfer.
Minor comment of language, if you spell out CM and D, spell out DPW, just the acronyms are inconsistent.
That's five minutes, that's five minutes before the article.
Yeah, the article is in it.
Here, here it says, spells it out, and then it says slashed DPW.
Well, even though the name change for DPW is on the warrant, it won't take effect until, A, after town meeting, after the appropriations are voted, but B, they're all bylaw changes,
Question two is becoming four different questions.
Well, you're not looking to change any of the other work. So it's a full month, three, three.
Well, no, I mean, if we started two months ago and had better wording, we would've had different wording, but no. So now we're stuck with this, so let's just put it in there.
So there's a motion made and seconded.
Well, he's gonna revise them, why don't we wait and vote on them till October?
Well, when he drafts it, you suggested that he draft the language. Then we can vote on them. But in the meantime, we can talk about this reserve fund transfer.
Oh, minor comment of language, if you spell out CM and D, spell out DPW. Just the acronyms are inconsistent.
That's five minutes before the article.
Yeah, the article is in it.
Here it says, spells it out, and then it says slashed DPW.
Well, even though the name change for DPW is on the warrant, it won't take effect until, A, after town meeting, after the appropriations are voted, but B, they're all bylaw changes, so they have to go to the attorney general. Attorney general has to approve it, so it won't be until, like, August that'll be effective.
I don't think DPW shouldn't even be on here, then.
Or we should just use CM and D.
Technically, DPW shouldn't be on it, but if you wanna have it there for clarification, if somebody doesn't know what CM and D.
It is, it's slashed right now, but it spells out CM and D and acronym DPW.
So we haven't heard the argument for the $35,000, except indirectly, and hearing that it's gonna reduce the amount that has to be raised by taxation for the upcoming year, I would move approval of this.
Is it?
Because we've already taxed, we've already got the, we already have the money.
Leave.
So we might as well spend it rather than tax people again for.
My question is, do we need the reserve fund transfer? I asked, where are we on the reserve fund transfer now, and how much do we have left for the rest of the year? And do we have any other upcoming reserve fund transfers that we're expecting?
Right now, we have 100 and, we have. Okay, the reserve fund, we have a balance of 186,946.
And that took out the 10,000 that we just recently approved for the fire chief.
Yes, it did, and the 100,000 for the trees, and then there were a couple smaller ones early on. So that's what's remaining. Things that could, obviously, legal fees is something that we're gonna have to consider.
Oh, no, they're not gonna be, we're not gonna be. He's not paying attention.
Didn't I hear him say he was donating services?
Yeah, no, legal's gonna be pretty.
But we did a supplemental for snow and ice and for police overtime, so those are already taken care of.
What about, I guess, last year, at the end of the year, we did transfers, interdepartmental transfers that covered a lot of the legal at the end of the year, right?
We can still do that.
And I assume, yeah, at the end of the year, we'll do that. And I don't know, are people trending where there may be some extra metrics, or is it too early to tell?
No, there's some that are running, I think we've got something in our debt service. I think, again, it's budgeted a little high.
Your reports have been pretty favorable the last couple times you've said.
Yeah, and I'm sending them out every other week, so it's really paying, people are paying attention to it, so, yeah.
So you think, you think then the reserve fund would still be adequate at 150, whatever, 151,000 if we do this?
Yeah, I do.
Why do we need it now?
So this came up in the course of, I was just throwing it out there, because as you know, George, over the next couple weeks, all the unknowns start to play in, and, not so much this year, but in previous years, there's been a lot of free cash that suddenly had to go here, there, and those discussions. So I had thrown out to Jeff and Steve, if you start having those conversations, there's only one item of all mine that I would steer you towards if you were gonna pull something off the ballot. And at least as the board knows, there's about a three-week difference between now and town meeting, and then another, what, three and a half weeks for the ballot, before you can commit to purchase something. So you're looking at something that I could potentially have within several days after the advisory meeting, or if it stays on the ballot, as it would, it's out till after the election, which is.
May 14th.
May 14th, and then you can get a commitment, but that cash isn't even available till after July 1st. This is a piece of equipment we use all year, but primarily, as you drive around town and you slam your tire into a pothole, you think, that's what Sean's talking about. That's what the hot box is for, it's to get hot asphalt, keep it hot, and patch roads. So we'd be using it today, we'd be using it every day now. So it's not an emergency thing, it's not something we can't live without, but.
It'll help with the spread.
It certainly will. So, and, you know, the conversation went from, well, if there's gonna, if there's a reserve fund, that's gonna turn into free cash.
Yeah, I've got to feel that way.
By default, in a month. So if it's just gonna end up there anyway, then a piece of equipment that's sitting in a yard in Shrewsbury could be in Sherburne now, rather than wait for that process.
Just goes, do we have a hot box now, or we just kinda been trying to get it real quick before it cools down?
You want me to explain? Yeah, exactly that. So we're fortunate enough, this hot top plant's close, but, yeah, to, given illustration, we take a bigger truck, we go get four tons, that's what they wanna sell you as a minimum, we bring it back, we split that into two tons, and we send guys out as fast as they can, and anything that's in the truck at lunchtime, it's too cold.
Like, you've seen stuff, like, I'm convinced that's what happened in foresting, in the mini mills, you know what I mean, the stuff started peeling up. It just wasn't hot enough. So at least, as a public works thing, I support a hot box in general, because it basically, it saves money in the long run, because it keeps the asphalt good, otherwise, it's gone in like a year.
Right.
And it actually makes it so it goes out.
Right now, in the cold weather, what we do versus what all the towns that drive through Sherburne to get the hot top with their hot boxes, we use cold patch, which is, you see the guys out right now, they shovel it out, they tamp it a little bit, they drive away. If it rains the next day, that stuff's blowing all over the place. So they go back to the same pothole day after day.
I've seen your guys on Ash Lane almost every day fixing something, and then it's fixing the same one.
So that could've been hot top, but it, you know, done well once, and then it's a permanent patch, so.
So I think I moved approval.
Second. You gonna sign this, Sean?
Me?
Somebody's gonna sign the top of it, I think.
Sure.
The part that says, "I will pay for this personally."
The part that's asking for the reserve fund transfer, you gotta sign. But we've gotta move in a second, so all in favor of supporting this? Okay.
And the advisory will vote also, we just wanna double check that there's, are comfortable is enough in the reserve fund.
150 is adequate to get through.
I think it, I think it will. But we'll go through that with Sharon. Advisory has to approve this. We actually haven't approved the fire department one that you approved last week yet either, because we haven't met.
Well, as you look at whether that's adequate, remember that by law, you can make adjustments in the last two months of the fiscal year from different accounts. So there should be enough, it would flow to free cash.
Sean should sign this.
You could divert to cover immediate needs.
Right, that's what we're wearing. Some years are turned back, so that helps, but I just wanna make sure there are any overruns right now.
Absolutely.
So again, the idea is, from my part for making the motion, if we don't have to tax the voters for an additional $35,000, why do that? Give them a break.
Also, Sean, can fill potholes sooner.
And he can fill potholes soon.
So it's a win-win. Okay, great, so we've got, I think this paperwork is in good form now.
Did you sign it?
I did. Looked good to you, Sharon? That's got everything it needs on?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Anything else to talk about on town meeting prep?
Is this our last meeting before town meeting?
No, we have.
No, we have April 11th. April 11th, yeah.
Because at some point, when we, I supported everything advisory did, where did Jeff go? There it is. Supported everything that Jeff did, so I think that the board is going to basically be echoing what advisory's recommendations were. I don't see the board of selectmen objecting or filing a substitute motion to do something different than what advisory did.
We support, we did take a vote at the meeting before the Saturday session, and we supported everything, and most of them were unanimous, there were a couple of.
Except for the two, last two, I think.
Except for the two citizen petitions.
Right, and at the public hearing, we did support Article 26, the sustainability part.
Right, that's right, we didn't vote any citizens petitions first, but we voted that at the Saturday.
Right, exactly.
So we're all set, we don't have to take any more votes unless somebody changes their mind about something.
There was something in advisory's report, but we didn't hear or see any of the conferences.
Well, I mean, I drafted my section, already turned it in, I think most people have drafted it, but I think, I don't know, Diane, you're supposed to get it, or Jeannie by the end of the week, I think, right? At the end of this week?
I talked to Steve Leahy today, he said he was up till 2:30 last night working on it, so.
He keeps texting me also, but capital budgets are already turned in there for report, which is in the back. And I've written up the sections I had, which include all the capital items also.
You never know what is gonna strike, the town meeting's fancy, and something'll catch fire that you didn't think was gonna catch fire, right?
The dump truck comes sliding in and out there, they.
But I am concerned about the sustainability coordinator, because I don't think the position was clear enough on the Saturday meeting, and I think it's, whatever that proverb is, where everybody has a different view of the same thing.
That's why the motion is so important.
Yeah, and, well, not only the motion, but also the sales job between now and town meeting, and some coherence of the message.
I think they're having a, they're having a presentation of the citizens that are in support of that article, having a presentation at Pine Hill. I don't know which night, there's a sign-up downstairs, I saw.
For the sustainability?
Yeah, for the, they're doing an information session for the public.
That'll be good.
About that question.
They're bringing in the sustainability coordinator, some other terms.
Right.
That's a good idea.
Maybe I'll take a look.
Are they bicycling here, or they?
I'll take a look at the advisory write-up on that article, though, just to, because it helps to be strengthened, and also, Mike.
I think so, yeah, I think it's just, it's a message thing, I mean, I think we all supported it, and we, you know, we may have supported it for three or four or five different reasons. I think everybody had, I had a different angle than some others, you had a different angle than some others, Jeff, so.
I think we all think it's a good idea, we're just not 100% sure exactly how it's gonna play out.
Right.
Or how the motion is gonna actually read.
Right, but I would expect some discussion on town meeting, and we may, as a board, have to jump in and say something supportive on that.
Okay.
Do we need to go back to the ballot questions?
Darren, are we good? Do we have the ballot language? Do you want us to vote on certain language?
I think we do.
We have it, yeah. I will, I'll edit everything and send it to you.
We want to vote the language tonight is the problem.
So it's pretty simple, the motion is gonna be to adopt the ballot questions as prepared by town council.
To separate them. Yep.
As prepared by town council in response to the board's request at this meeting, okay? That way it's clear what we.
And you know what I'll do when I, when I edit this, I'll just shoot you a copy.
Yeah.
Okay?
Perfect.
All in favor of that? Okay. Thanks, Darren. We trust you.
Yeah, David.
Okay, so are we up to second?
David had something.
Oh, David, what's up?
I didn't know if you were ending right now.
Well, I was gonna go to the reports. Do you have something else on town meeting?
No.
Okay. Do you wanna be first to have the finance director report, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to go first.
Go ahead, David.
I don't have a report to me.
You don't? Sharon, do you have a report? This is driving me crazy.
Diane has.
Diane has a report, okay. Great.
The school is looking for a commencement speaker for graduation, June 6th at 6:00 P.M. Before the state of the nation.
So I've done it for many years, and I don't feel I should do it again, and I usually do the Memorial Day, which is like six days before, so somehow that.
I would nominate our chairman, Chuck Yan.
Oh, that's so easy to do.
George, you did a nice job.
My objection, my daughter has fifth grade graduation that day, and my family's gonna be in town, so I'd prefer not to do it.
You don't wanna drag them all out there to see me make a speech? No?
I actually would do it, but I can't guarantee I'll be here.
I guess it's Chuck by acclamation, I think it is.
All right.
I won't be on the board unless there's an insane write-in effort, which I would not support, so.
Okay.
And you can't do it?
I would do it, but I can't guarantee I'll be.
Yeah, okay, well, so you wanna email Chuck and tell him?
I'll send him to his graduation, a cap and down.
Let's see, what else? Sharon, finance director report, anything?
Nothing really to report.
Thank you for your emails, I think those are helpful to review.
Oh, yeah. I had a question, though, on Steve Leahy's comment today. Do you know what the tax rate effect is of having everything bonded, all these capital items bonded? Was there a discussion of that? Jeff does.
Yeah, he does.
Thank you.
Peter Gallatano had developed a model that he's been.
Yeah, we've got a model looking at it. Part of it is the amount of the purchase, but some of the things aren't gonna be purchased right away, like.
Yeah, it's timing, too.
There's timing, like, particularly the town buildings is almost half of the capital, and you have to do design work and do bidding, so that bonding won't happen right away for town buildings, for sure. Maybe for most of the other items. So we've done a model, I actually have it steady, Peter Gallatano did it, in our next meeting, we're gonna review it. So we definitely have, you know, it's an approximation, and we have to review it with Heidi, I think, too.
You don't have a number now, but.
No, I don't have it in my head. I actually, I mean, I have the email, but I haven't really studied it yet. He just did it over the week, I got it Sunday night, so.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to study it, but.
Is it a straight analysis of what that debt would cost, or does it take into account the debt retirement?
No, it's just the new debt. Just the new debt, so it'd be layered into the existing. It doesn't, it doesn't forecast, I don't believe, the total debt expense for the town, it just forecasts the debt associated with capital expenditure items.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking, wasn't it?
That's exactly what I'm asking, yeah, it's just because it becomes a point, you know, a point that people wanna know.
Right, right.
It's really a good model.
Yeah, I mean, this is a fairly modest capital year this year.
It is, compared to what we've seen in previous years.
Yeah, and with school roofs, next year and the year after, we're gonna have more in the next couple of years, I think, too. We have, all three roofs have to be replaced at the schools in the next four years, I think, so. I mean, the regional ones, we only pay whatever it is, 46% of, but.
Some of those regional ones, I thought were done fairly recently.
I thought the same thing myself, because you and I had kids there at that time when they were doing it, yes, I know.
Well, I remember the roofs leaking, so I just assumed they were fixed after that.
Yeah, I don't know, we haven't seen it yet. It was actually supposed to, one of the regional, I can't remember which one's the highest party, the regional school committee decided to defer to a year. It was in there on site insight report for this year.
Yeah.
I can't remember, was it middle school or high school? I think it's the high school, but they decided to defer to here, so.
Okay.
They're both, Pine Hill's roof is looming there also.
And I know they're talking, just one thing on those, they're exploring solar when they do those.
Right.
Yes, again, as I mentioned before, there's legislation pending, you know, there's this thing called the Green New Deal.
Yes.
Part of that is to make everything green. California has already passed a law that says all new buildings have to be solar powered, net zero. So the idea is to expand that across the nation, and the state legislature has picked that up, so there are all these pieces of legislation that's trying to implement the idea of making Massachusetts more green.
I think it's a good goal, I mean, if you look at, like, the CM and D facility was a good one, because it's largely a large, flat roof. You know, Pine Hill roof is, if you've ever been up in the roof, I've been up there once, it's kinda broken up in pieces. Some buildings may not lend themselves well to solar panels, if you've got large HVAC if you've got large HVAC units on the roof, and if you've got, high school has that planetarium on the roof, if you remember, too, that Mr. Bridger got them to fund, so if there's a lot of elevation changes on the roof, it's sometimes not a good application for solar.
We're on to executive session, I guess. Does we have the page, David? Probably not.
It's in here, I think it might.
It's in my, it's in the executive session package, okay.
Second page.
Okay. Great. I think these sites are, same site, two different sites, collective bargaining and litigation, so.
Litigation and collective bargaining are actually in the same-
They're both in the same, even though one's here, okay.
Well, they're in the same for strategy, but remember, if you're getting the actual bargain.
Okay, these are strategy, so that's good. Okay. The board, what did we do there? Okay, the board is going to move, I moved, to put the board in executive session, under Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares, and I do, library, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to discuss, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief and the police chief, and to discuss strategy